I declare this year's 2002 Brentwood Town Meeting with the business. Thank you, thank you all for coming, as well as so many of you having come last Tuesday to the election. We had a 38% turnout, which was such a large turnout for that kind of an election, that we ran out of ballots at about 6 o'clock. And Daphne had to run off extra ballots, and of course those are ones that were not going to the machine. So a number stayed up until about 10 o'clock at night, and coming the 6 o'clock to 7 o'clock ballots that would be going to the machine. In any way, in any way, thank you for being here this morning. If you would stand and face our flag, let's all of us pledge allegiance to our country's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And isn't it wonderful that we can do that? Isn't it wonderful that we can do that? So quick reminders. If you have cell phones with you, please put them on mute, so that we don't hear a ton of... Ton of... what's the word? Ton of... Thank you, thank you. Of music going on throughout the morning and afternoon and into the evening. Yeah, I know. The exits are over there, and out this door over here, those are our two exits. You know where the restrooms are, out through here and around the corner, and take another jog. And by the way, there will be a restroom break for all of us sometime mid-morning. And unfortunately, there are no Girl Scout cookies. We are now a legal and continued body for conducting the town of Brentwood's legislative affairs. We are continuing from this past Tuesday, March 8th, Election Day. My name is Richard Chamberlain, Dick Chamberlain. My family and I moved to 15 Bronny Falls Road in Brentwood in 1971, and have been here ever since, and I am your elected Town Attorney. Something that I always read to you, which I think is just so important. We are now the legal... We here today represent more than just a legal body of 3,112 registered voters out of a town population of around 5,000. 3,112 registered voters out of a town population of around 5,000. Outside New England, outside New England, many across the United States look at our traditional town meeting system as something really quite unique. As a place where democracy prevails. As a place where each of us is a potential legislator, conducting business throughout our town meeting. Some have referred to town meetings as the best example of pure democracy. And I would like to add another piece of pure democracy to that, and that was February 24th Candidate Night. We had 27 candidates for town and school positions, each speaking three to four minutes about what they would do within their position if they were elected. And while they were speaking at the library, there were 80, 80, 8-0 Zoom gatherings throughout Brentwood, with folks watching and preparing to ask questions. And so the candidates talked from 6 until 8, and then the questions went from about 8 until 12 or 9. And it was beautiful. A lot of information was exchanged. This is a good time to break into my notes and turn it off.
If you have the Town Report, if you turn to the front page, we did a dedication this year to Ken Christensen, and I just wanted to read that. Ken Christensen was born in Utica, New York, in 1941. He comes from a large family, being the fourth of 10 children. Ken grew up in New York and entered the Air Force in 1958. He was stationed at Pease Air Base for a time which brought him to New Hampshire where he met his wife Ellen. Ken and Ellen have married, have married for nearly 60 years. On the June 17th this year, 60 years. And went on to have two children, Frank and Gomaree, and have four grandchildren. Ken retired from the Air Force in 1975 and built a career in the insurance industry primarily focused on workers' compensation. Position led him traveling quite a bit, and he often jokes that he spent 13 nights in the airport in Pittsburgh. He and Ellen moved to Brentwood in 1998. After retiring in 2004, Ken and Ellen initially spent much of their time volunteering at the Mary E. Bartlett Library. Ken served on the Municipal Budget Committee from 2007 to 2010, and has Brentwood's representative to the Technical Advisory Committee from 2012 to 2017. He also serves in the Southeast Regional Refuge Disposal District, the zoning board of adjustments, and most notably the chairman of the Select Board, which he has been a member throughout the years from 2012 to present. During his time in selection, the town has seen tremendous change and growth. We have always thought of Ken as someone who truly cares about this town and people in it. Ken continues to encourage residents to get involved in the town, and he will continue to be a strong support of the town and his employees. The town of Brentwood has been incredibly fortunate to have Ken's leadership, and he will be greatly missed. For me, he's become an incredible valued friend and part of my family. So the town would like to recognize you for all your years of service. Thank you.
Both honored and humble. Thank you so much. Now, Ken, I have a story about you. About a year ago, I had what finally decided to be a viral infection, whatever that was. But it put me out of commission for a while. And I live alone, and I do my own cooking, which I like to do. But various friends were delivering food to me. I walked into my garage, and here were two paper bags about that tall, full of food items. And I thought, well, you know, I don't really need that, but that's awfully nice. And I took one of them into the house, and I emptied everything out, and I put it away. Then I went back out to pick up the other bag, and I noticed there was a magazine there. And I pulled a magazine out. It was a Town and Country Administrative Magazine developed by the New Hampshire Council, addressed to Ken. And then I realized what was going on. Ken brings me that magazine each month after he gets to rid of it. Ken had left the two bags there for me to take over to Pilgrim Church Food Camp. So I went back in the house, and I went around everywhere and filled up the bag and took it back. But that is a wonderful example of Ken. Ken and his wife Ellen are givers everywhere, in ways that we don't know about and he would never tell us about. And that's awesome, Ken.
So Ken, I don't see anything... Did the Board of Selectmen give you anything, or did they get sheepfrogs in you?
I brought you flowers. I wanted to say a couple of quick things if I could, because we've worked together for a really long time, and I don't want to get emotional. But if any of you have ever shown up to or made it to a memorial ceremony, you probably know that Ken and his wife, they gave the ultimate sacrifice for our country, and he'll always have a special place in my heart for that. The other thing is that I just wanted to say is, we've talked recently. We've been through a lot over the years, but I think we did a really good job with this town over the years. The school is great, the town's working out well. I know you said something recently, it wasn't fun anymore, and I hear what you're saying. But I do want to tell the world that Ken is a fun guy, and that is, if you go to his house on Halloween, he gives out full-size candy bars.
Since we are a continued town meeting from last Tuesday, the 8th, it's my responsibility to announce the election results. What I would ask would be that the peoples of whose names I call out come up to the front, one by one, as I call out your name and identify the position. And if each of them would come up, and then Daphne will swear everybody in, and then a photo may be taken to be used, word up. For Selectmen, Jennifer Jones. Also for Selectmen, Ross Calley. The Supervisor of the Checklist, Charles Skip Williams. Skip, do you realize that that is a six-year term? Cemetery Trustees, Justin Kane. For Municipal Budget Committee, two people, Jack Mitchell. Okay, okay, we can't swear them into Budget Committee yet, because there is a recount on Monday night. I can't forget that. Otherwise, it would have been Michelle Sulek and Jack Mitchell. For Trust Funds, it would be Bill Dunne. The Planning Board, Stephanie Kieser. And Bill Mactell. For myself as moderator, it's Dick Chamberlain. The Planning Board, Bruce Stevens. The Library Trustees, two people, Melody Santos. I will tell you again, as a reminder, there were 300... 3,112 registered voters, with a 38% turnout. Now, for the zoning amendments, I'm not going to read through in detail all four of the zoning amendments, but I would just say that the first three won and the fourth one lost. And the first one won by 564 yeses against 508 noes. The second one won by 695 yeses and 458 noes. The third one won by 548 yeses and 485 noes. And the fourth one lost by 478 votes, and... No, it lost by 608 votes. Okay, let's go to the next one. For the School Board, for three years, Kate Longfield. I think there may be somebody else that I missed up there. No? Well, I did myself. Oh, okay.
So what I will ask is, when we're done here, that you sign, and then it's going to be back to the board. So if you raise your right hand and keep your name when you come to that point, you can be right off the air, okay? All right. Aye?
Aye. Melody Santos.
Of Brentwood, do solemnly swear.
Of Brentwood, do solemnly swear.
That I will bear faith and true allegiance to the United States of America.
That I will bear faith and true allegiance to the United States of America.
And the State of New Hampshire.
And the State of New Hampshire.
That will support the Constitution thereof.
And will support the Constitution thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye?
Aye.
Melody Santos.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent on me.
All the duties incumbent on me.
As the mayor, pardon your role.
As the mayor, pardon your role.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations of this Constitution.
And the laws of the State of New Hampshire.
And the laws of the State of New Hampshire.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I'd like at this time to ask Kevin Johnson to come up to the front here. And on behalf of any word, I would like to present Kevin with a little gift for his service to the planning board and to the town in general. Kevin had, I think, was one of the first hippies in town, in the southeast of New Haven. But he camouflaged that pretty well by serving close to 20 years as a member of the Police Department here in Brentwood. And then after that time in 2006, I wonder why, he ran for Board of Selectmen and served a term on Board of Selectmen. Was aware of his responsibilities on the Board of Selectmen. He served as the Planning Board's representative. After the time of his term was over, he was an alter on the Planning Board for, I believe, three years. And then he ran and served as a regular member of the Board for the last 10 years. So total of 16 years of Planning Board affiliation, and again, more than a couple decades as a policeman, in fact. So we wanted to present him a little gift and thank him for his service there. And we may be back and serve the town, showing some of the old fort.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everybody's attention today and being here. Town means a lot to me. I'm in town for 50... it's the 51st year, so I hope to be here another 50 years.
You're not that old.
They gave me when I was six. Thank you very much.
RSA 40, that the State of New Hampshire provides that the moderator may prescribe the rules and procedure, but such rules may be altered by the town. Although this statute grants the moderator extensive legal powers, those powers may be reversed by your majority vote at this meeting. Collectively, especially if you collectively disagree with the ruling I make, you may vote to overturn it. To have orderly town and school meetings, and for all of us to be on the same page, Doug Cowie as school moderator, and I as town moderator, years ago, wrote Rules of Procedure. The rules are printed on pages seven and eight of your Town Report, and have occasionally been published in our monthly Brentwood newsletter. I will highlight just a few, actually seven, which will be quick. Number one, this is your town meeting. You determine the length of discussion, and you determine when we recess or adjourn. You determine any need of a continued town meeting. And there have been years that we have had a continued town meeting, particularly when we had bond issues for the school and the library at the same time, and we went for three nights in a row. Two, you may participate in discussion and voting only, only, if you are a registered voter in the town of Brentwood. If you are not one of today's 3,112 Brentwood citizens listed on the voter checklist, then an affirmative vote of the voter's present is required for you to participate in discussion. But discussion only. So if there is somebody out there who is not a registered member, and there is a need that you have to speak, you can't speak until there's a vote of the entire assemblage to say yes. When you wish to speak, please come to the floor mic. And when I recognize you, hold your voter's card high and state your name and your Brentwood address. This further ensures that you are a registered voter. Conversations must take place through myself as moderator, which means that we don't have the situation where somebody over there is speaking to somebody over there, or even worse, yelling at some people over there. It's through the moderator, and that's how we keep some semblance of civility. Please note the Supervisors of the Checklist. Would they... Would the two Supervisors of the Checklist, please stand? Thank you, thank you. That's Skip and Kaylee. And they double check, they double check to be sure that each speaker is a registered voter. Why? We need to be extra careful about those who are not registered voters speaking, if that should happen, or in any way influencing discussion by speaking with others in the audience or by giving hand to a voice vote. And the reason for that is there are legalities, and it might invalidate whatever we had just voted on. Okay, number four, number four of seven. Calling the question or closing debate, when does this happen? Generally out of frustration. When there's a lengthy discussion and people just really, really wish to vote. Rarely is it used to stifle discussion, but that can be attempted. Now, my style as moderator is to see that all sides of an issue are presented, but also to join you in not wanting discussion to go on and on and on. So I will do these things. I will try to sense where you are. Occasionally, I'll offer my sense of where I think you are, which you may agree or disagree with. And eventually, I'll ask if you're ready for a vote to close discussion. And if the majority of you wish to continue discussion, we continue. If you do offer a motion to close discussion, you must come to the mic. You can't yell out from inside. It's a great noise. You really need to come up to the mic. But I will also allow those that are already standing at the mic to first say what they wish. And I will also not accept your motion if both sides of the issue have not been heard. It is my responsibility to be sure that both sides of an issue are heard. Okay, we're up to number five. Thank you. We're up to number five. The only items, the only items of substance that we can discuss today and legally vote on today are the posted warrant articles. Now, you do have an opportunity near the conclusion of our town meeting to share any concern that you have that will not be voted on. And we do have one and perhaps two of those at the end of, I think it's warrant article 14. Time limit at the mic. This is a good one. I gotta tell you that the 27 candidates for Candidates Night did wonderfully in responding to my asking them to speak between three and four minutes, not above four minutes, and if they could do it, only three minutes. And if you multiply 27 people times four minutes, you can see why we filled up the first two hours with candidates speaking. So in fairness to all, and so we will conclude in time for dinner, I ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. And as far as planning information goes, the last few years, we've started at about this time, and we've ended at about quarter past 1:00 or 1:30. So it's good that you all brought your lunch with you, right? Right, okay. That can be thrown off by extended discussion on something like Article Number One, which is the bond issue. Then again, it might not be. But just to give you a rough idea, to go through the 14 warrant articles that we've got, we could very well be here until sometime, a little bit of time afternoon. Okay, we're closing in on the warrant articles. But first, I want to introduce those at the front tables and a few of you in the audience. Ken, would you introduce the board?
Good morning. To my immediate left is Bob Montagari, to his left is Andy, and our newest member, John. To my immediate left is Bob Montagari, to his left is Andy, and our newest member, John.
To my right is our town clerk, tax collector, Daphne, Daphne Wallace. Michelle, would you introduce the Budget Committee vote?
Hi, Michelle Soodit, I'm the chair of the Budget Committee. Outside of that under the table, we have Anthony Phillips, Jack Mitchell, Lois DeYoung, Melissa Litchfield, who is, she is sitting up here for the last time as a member of the Budget Committee. She has served as our school court representative, and she's no longer on that board. So, we as a committee wish to thank her for, I believe it's been six years of service, she has done a stellar job representing the school. In other ways, thank you, Melissa. Not here today is Elena Oliva, and although she will probably get mad at me for saying this, I did want to recognize her for all the help she gave me in putting together the presentation we did at the public hearing, she was an immense help to me. So, I know she's not watching because it's not live, but thank you, Elena.
Thank you, Michelle. Our school moderator, Doug Cowie. If our superintendent of schools, Dr. Ryan, was here, I'd introduce him, but he's not here. Now, I want to introduce somebody who is new to Brentwood, and that is our new police chief, John. I stopped in at the police station, and I asked John, since he was new, if he would come to the mic and introduce himself a little bit. John?
Is there a motion to adjourn? Bob, thank you, folks. What a feeling, good morning. You have some servants to your community up here who have dedicated hours and hours of service for all of you folks. It's nice that they're all recognized, that they're always helping out in times of need. So, you should all be very proud for the community leaders that work so hard, because they give you time of service. So, a round of applause for them. Also like to thank one other individual in the room. Several months ago, this community was put in a position at the police department that was very unfortunate. They asked upon the sheriff's office and Chief Sawyer for some help. There was no hesitation. They stepped in and, quite frankly, made my job in the first two weeks so much easier. It could have been a lot worse, and it was actually attractive for me to apply here, knowing that that man over there, Chief Sawyer, was at the helm kind of raining his shit for me. So, thank you very much, Chief Sawyer and the Sheriff's Office. And last, you should all give yourselves a round of applause. I came from a community that we didn't have a true town meeting, we had delivered it. The people in this room, this is your community, and it's so nice to see the outpouring of people that came here to support their community and determine what the future of that community is, not just for this year, but for coming here. So, a round of applause to you all, and thank you very much.
Thank you, John. And John has a last name, which is Ventura. Chief Berg, we're, we're not Chief Berg. Chief Joseph Berg of our firefighter. Thank you, Chief. And I think you've got some firefighters with you. My son was a firefighter, I know about firefighters. Our town road agent, Wayne Love. Wayne was, Wayne was our half-time chief of police and half-time road agent for many years. And then when Wayne retired from the chief of police position, he became our full-time road agent. Janice, Janice from the library, is Janice here? Janice Wiz is director of our library. Thank you, Janice. Would Ron Q. be here, the principal of this school? No, okay, okay. Our legal counsel, who has been our legal counsel for many, many years, is Walter Mitchell. Have I, have I left anybody out besides all of you? And we won't do that. Okay, thank you, thank you. Oh, oh, that sticker. Is there, is there anybody else who I blew it?
You did a good job.
Thank you, all right, all right. Okay, now finally, you get to vote. I would welcome, excuse me? Did I, no, did I, Karen. Geez, you better stand up, Karen. There are two people that I particularly really work with in the office. Karen is the town administrator, and Daphne is town clerk, tax agent. And it's great, we have great people to work with. Who else is on this? Okay, all right. I would welcome a motion to adopt the moderator's rules for the governance of this meeting. So vote. Vote. Is there a second to that?
Five seconds.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, then you're gonna buy into the rules that Doug and I created a century ago. Is there any, is there any discussion? Good, good. All those in favor of adopting the moderator's rules signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Okay, your second vote. I would welcome a motion to dispense with the full reading of the warrant this time. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and we do, we should be careful about the fact that the state has required in recent years that we keep a record, not only of who moved, but who seconded. And Daphne is writing that down. All, any further discussion about that? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Can we finally move into the warrant article? Now, a little, a little comment. Oh, thank you. That's good. A little comment about the warrant articles. We have fourteen. The first one, the first one is a bond issue, a bond issue for three million dollars. And bond issues require that we keep the polls open for one hour for voting, which we will do. And during that time, as people are voting, nothing else is happening except for the voting. If it turns out that all of us in here have voted before the hour is up, then we can continue with the next warrant articles, both discussing them and even voting on them. But we have to keep the polls open for the full hour, because there may be people dreading it afterwards. So, so we will start with warrant article number one, the three million dollars for conservation. We'll discuss it as long as you wish, and when you are ready, we will then move into the voting. And from that voting moment on, it will be an hour that the polls will be open. Then we'll move, and then again, if we've all voted and the time is still there, we'll move on to warrant article number two, which is, which is the big one, the general municipal operations. Now, we have a request, we've had a request to move warrant articles thirteen and fourteen up to being, those are the newsletter, the two warrant articles for the newsletter. The first, the first one, let me see, I, I was giving a wrong number. Twelve and thirteen, thank you. Okay, twelve is, is a fully authentic warrant article. Thirteen, if you read it closely, you'll see that it's really not a warrant article, it is asking for a straw vote. And when we get to that point, we'll have whatever amount of discussion you wish on both of the options that are suggested in there. However, five people, five people have asked that we move twelve and thirteen up to the numbers three and four. And I would first of all ask those five to stand, because that's required. The five people who are here, one, two, okay, Lois? Lois is here. Okay, Karen is here. Helen Smith?
Helen, stand up, please.
Helen, Helen is here, three. Bruce? Bruce is there. And War. I saw War. Okay, so they're all there. Thank you, you can sit down. There are, there are two things we can do about that. It's, it's my prerogative to, to just go ahead and grant that. On the other hand, there is also the option of you voting, and I would just assume that you voted. So, I would ask all those in favor of moving articles twelve and thirteen up to three and four, signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Okay, the ayes win, and that's what we will do. All right, we are finally at warrant article number one, which ultimately will require a two-thirds vote passed.
Move the article.
Second. And there is a second to it. All right, I will read it, and then I will ask Bob and Andy to speak to it, and then I believe Bob Stevens will be speaking to it. Open space warrant, recommended by the selectmen and the Budget Committee to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate three million dollars gross budget for purchasing land or other interests therein for conservation. Three million dollars of such sum to be raised through bonds or notes in compliance with the Municipal Finance Act to authorize the select board to issue, negotiate, sell, and deliver said bonds and notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon, and the maturity and the other terms thereof, and to take any other action they deem appropriate to effectuate the sale and/or issuance of said bonds or notes, subject, however, to the following provisions. No such bond shall be issued with a term of maturity less than fifteen years. Such bonding, excuse me, sir, just to let you know that, you're Bob Stevens, great, you're a good spy. All right, well, that's it. And you will get to speak immediately after Andy and Bob. Yeah, I think so. No such bond shall be issued with a term of maturity less than fifteen years. Such bonding authority shall expire at conclusion of fiscal year 2027. Purpose of warrant article is to conserve parcels determined by the Conservation Commission to be of strategic conservation interest to protect wildlife habitat and water resources while helping to maintain our town's rural character. Where practical, such land would be made available for use of the citizens of town for hiking, biking, running, hunting, fishing, et cetera. Within the laws of DeHampshire, use restrictions may be imposed by the town. However, after purchase, to comply with future grants, easements, and/or sale of property rights to permanently ease the conservation and to offset the cost to town as long as such restrictions comply with the spirit of purpose and at the discretion of the select board, and or an Indian now. Land or property interest to be purchased with bond proceeds shall be acquired in the name of the town by the Conservation Commission, subject to the approval of the select board pursuant to RSA 36A4. This would give, no, that's, that's you.
This will give Board of Selectmen the authority to secure bonds if there is strategic interest in conserving a particular parcel of land, and there's no tax impact for 2022. We did a similar bond around twenty years ago, I know Rob Wolfchuck was the chair of conservation for years, and with their stewardship of maintaining and working with people, they were able to conserve, I think anywhere between, with that two million dollar bond we had back then, anywhere between seven and fifteen million dollars roughly worth of properties at their value, I would assume it was probably like fifteen million. So, they did a really good job of doing that, and we're looking to do the same thing. The bonds that we took out for that two million dollars, they ranged in different times. We're gonna take out the two million dollars off once, we took out for different parcels throughout that time. And I think they get paid off, all those bonds, in 2032 is when those get paid off. So, this would be a very similar process. I'm gonna call Bob Stevens up, I know he's sitting back there waiting to be called up. I'm gonna call him up here to the mic, so he can explain probably a little bit more, in better terms than I could probably do, as far as what their dreams and hopes are with this warrant article. Bob, come on up. He's the chairman of our Conservation Commission.
Good morning, everyone. It's great to see all of our neighbors out here today. My wife Bethel is passing out a sheet, printed only seventy-five of them, and you've blown away my estimate of how many I would need here, so if you can, please share. This is a graphic of habitat and water resources in town, as well as conservation property that we already have.
Excuse me? Can you all hear Bob?
So, my wife and I live at sixteen North Hook Drive, and I'm a licensed professional engineer. My wife and I own an engineering firm near town with an office in Massachusetts. I have the privilege of leading a group of volunteers called the Conservation Commission. And it's our job to help the town conserve, and if you read our charter, that conservation is mostly geared toward preserving habitat. One of the benefits of preserving habitat is that we get to preserve our town's rural character. And that rural character affects many things, but it affects your pocketbook as well. People view this an awful lot sometimes as the town spending money, sometimes money it doesn't have. I've been to many engineering conferences in my career, and I can tell you that although it's not my specialty, land planning is not my specialty, I've always heard lectures on how conservation of open space saves towns money. All the studies showed it at conferences geared toward development and conferences geared toward anti-development, didn't matter. The studies show that conservation of land from residential development The studies show that conservation of land from residential development, especially single-family homes, saves money. On top of that, I grew up in Windham, New Hampshire, right here in, not in Van Conings. I don't know how many of you might know Windham. It was a lot like Brentwood when I was a boy, and it certainly is not that. It's a very nice place, but it is not what the town I grew up in, and it is not the town that Brentwood is. I've heard many people ask, what's, what's our goal? How much land should we conserve? And I would simply say that, my wife and I moved here in 2002, and ideally, I would have conserved every piece of property that wasn't built in 2002, and there's no other way to preserve entirely our rural character. This is not an all or nothing proposition, though. We can conserve land and maintain as much of our rural character as possible, and to that degree, we will keep our town from becoming Bedford, or Windham, or other communities like that. So I'm asking for your support on this warrant article. Your Conservation Commission is working hard, and would love to have a positive outcome here for your vote. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Why don't you stay up here in terms of questions that you have? We're open for discussion now of this warrant article. Who might like to come to the mic?
Hi, I'm Chris Knight, this is my world of Brentwood. Do you have any identified parcels right now, Bob, that are in the queue?
We do have a few parcels that are of interest to us, and I would rather not mention what those parcels are, because it could affect the part of the price and the transaction. But we have at least two, possibly three parcels right now that we would love to conserve on behalf of the town.
In the Marco, if I could, I recall what you're trying to do in my hometown, used to be like this, and no longer is sadly, and I've been up here for quite a while and see it happening to all of our beautiful New England towns. Just for clarification, on your open bond, could you just explain in the second sentence "or other interests"? So the purchase of land or other interests, thank you.
So, the real estate business is a legal one, if nothing else, and when we buy property, we buy rights, we're buying rights for property. I'm not an attorney, and maybe I should turn this over to Town Council, but what I do know is that you can buy interest in a property without owning it. For instance, if you have a right-of-way easement through your property to get to a parcel of land that maybe doesn't have access to, direct access to a road, that's a bundle of rights that you're buying from, or that you have from the owner of that property. That property is otherwise owned by that person, but you have a right to pass. Most of the town roads were once that, if not, well, not still. But you can buy conservation rights, and our, our goal as a minimum would be to, to buy development rights of properties so that they're not developed into single-family residential structures.
Bill Dunn from, Bill Dunn from 9 Block Drive. Bob, the, my wife and I have owned conservation land since 2008, and just about that time, I had stood up at town meeting, and I had mentioned the issue of all the junk that was part and parcel of that conservation property when we bought it, and since that time, we've spent just a small fortune removing the equivalent of two junkyards, which included siding, picnic tables, tires, you name it, it's there. But the one thing I was trying to stress, and there's nothing I can do about it today, nothing that my wife can do about it today, except just issue again a friendly reminder, because perhaps you can do something about it. It just seems to me that if somebody were to purchase the property, the conservation property, the way we did, from a prior owner who benefited from that conservation land purchase, then they're the ones who reaped the benefits, but we're the ones who had to do the cleanup afterward. So it, it seems to me only fair that anybody who gets into a transaction with the town, with the Conservation Commission ought to have a certain requirement that they clean it up, so that it's passed on to future generations in a rather pristine manner. Anyhow, that talks, I don't, again, I don't know what I can do about that, but I just want to offer that friendly suggestion.
Thank you, Bill. That's a, that's an issue that is, has come to the forefront in land conservation, and this is a topic, this land conservation business has been evolving quite a bit, and you've seen land trusts develop all over around us. They've learned a bunch, and so have conservation organizations, town Conservation Commissioners, about how to, how to do this process, how to ease land, and how to monitor it afterward. So there's a monitoring system in place now, that's, that's the short answer, to see to it that folks whose land is conserved gets audited on an annual basis, and that stuff like you're describing doesn't continue. So if anyone wants to conserve land, they have land they want to conserve on behalf of the town, leave a nice legacy behind for your neighbors, and maybe your own family, we would love to hear from you, and we will see to it that the right language is indeed to ensure its situation for perpetuity, and that we monitor it under the guidance of the Conservation Commission. The other, the other thing I just want to add, sorry, Rob, the other thing I just want to add is, this is titled open space bond, but it's not our intention to buy or, or seek interest in every piece of property out there, okay? We can't possibly do that. We have no intention, for instance, of buying land for ball fields, or for, you know, even cemeteries. This, this particular money is for, because we, we want to be good stewards and good issues, we're targeting this money toward habitat, okay? So we're going to do our best to use this money in places of critical habitat, and for where, say, development might hurt our prime wetlands or water supply.
I'm Rob Wolfchuck, 17 PBD Drive. I think Bob just did an excellent job describing the purposes for the bond, and what I'd like to just emphasize on top of the environmental stuff is the economic parts. I just want to reemphasize what Bob said, is that single-family residential development costs all of us as taxpayers a lot. The taxes that an individual home pays does not cover the schools, the road, the fire, the police, et cetera. So while it seems like it might be an expense, or it is an expense when we initially issue the bond, over time, we're all going to save money in the future. And just to clarify one thing that Bob said earlier, the first tranche of the $2 million bond actually is paying off in 2025. So half a million dollars of that bond from 20 years ago is already going to be paid off. So new bonds have the issue going forward, say, we do in the next one, or two, or three years, we'll be having to offset from that other bond maturing. So I fully support it, and I have a lot of confidence that Bob and the Conservation Commission will prioritize the lands and really leverage this bond into two, or three, or four times the amount of property, just like the prior bonds.
Lois Deon, Crowley Falls Road. I, we donated, my husband and I, something over 100 acres on the Exeter River. We donated as an easement, and then we donated it, not to the town, actually, to the south. And we had a fabulous experience. There was a gravel pit on our land, which needed reclaiming. They, when we, I redonated it, they reclaimed it, it has been closed off, a liability, I didn't sleep nights thinking about that pit sitting out there. They have done a fabulous job, it's all, it's really what the town, our people, our animals, our, everybody out there is having a wonderful place to go, thanks to this kind of thing. And I couldn't support it more, because it is, for the town, for economics, and for our wildlife, and our everything else, it is 100% in for the town.
Suzie Curtis, Gout Drive. I know that the town of Brentwood has the goal of conserving land for rural character, but it also has a goal of increasing business presence to offset the tax burden in that way as well, and I was just curious if the, both goals would be able to kind of be considered in both concurrently, knowing that, and I think you kind of answered my question, in that the land that you were considering is more towards natural wetland, this is conservation land, obviously, and that more industrial land or areas that would be used for business purposes, as the town considers future possible corporate development down the road, that it would be able to accomplish both goals at the same time, purchasing lands, developing businesses and whatnot in the future as well? If anyone wanted to speak to that, whether it's the select board or yourselves.
Yeah, good point, and great question. There's, and the short answer is yes. The Conservation Commission will be working with the New Economic Development Committee, and with the Planning Board, and we've had discussions to that effect already, there are meetings already scheduled to discuss how we can create all of this to the forefront of land.
Joyce Keagle, 16 Pyron Road, I'm speaking to you as your cemetery superintendent. Somebody may or may not know that I've come to the town within the last year and let them know that our municipal cemetery is at tipping point, 50%, not full, but lots sold, and I let them know that there are models out there in other states, and we're looking to do it here, that we can take conservation land and do something with that for a cemetery. And it's come to light within the last two weeks, that I've actually, we had someone reach out to me, who's done that in Hillsborough, they've actually taken their conservation land, they've come up with some sort of model, it's a hybrid model, it's totally credible, where they can actually do burials, and it also could be income for the town. They can't get into it, because it's just coming to light within like the last week or so. This company that, or this organization that does it, can work with conservation, they can work with lawyers, they can work with cemeteries, they are really big, not to say that we're going to go with them, but they said if we have land that we would like to conserve, they can help us do that, they can also look at the land that we already have, and determine if that would be a cemetery. And to let you know what's the big deal, that there is an RSA that says that we do have to provide to our citizens a final resting place. You have more 55-plus communities coming in, if you have conservation land, and we can follow this model, it's a win-win, you keep your open space, but you also have a place for your, you know, loved ones to pray in.
Can I just respond to that? The Conservation Commission and Joyce are working together on this, there's, I think, some information sessions. There's some information session, or an information session that were more planned, so we'll be working with Joyce on that.
Liz Haria, South Road. Most of you that have been coming to the school meetings and the town meetings know that I usually try to cut stuff. I'm not in favor, I am in favor of this, not, not cutting, I'm in favor of this, it's throwing good, good money after good money, as opposed to throwing good money after bad, so I'm, Bob did a great job at presenting it, and, and I'm totally for this. Can't call the question, there's another person in line.
Matt Lipinski, 222 Middle Road. I just want to echo some of the, for many of the things that argument said, I'm wholeheartedly in favor of bond issues like this. I completely support this warrant article, and I encourage all of us to pass it.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak before we vote to close or not close discussions?
Richard Gagin, 5 Wilson Way. I, our community is one of those single-family home communities, and I thought I heard a comment back earlier, but I'm, I just want to clarify that, in our community, there are no children, and that we pay our share of community taxes. And I, I think our community, by doing that, puts forth some really valid contributions to the town. We don't draw on the school resources, or we don't draw on, or create additional expenses to the school, but we pay our fair share of taxes. And I can't speak to the other developments going around in town, but our community is extremely conscious, and we're very hard for conservation. We've done a number of expenditures that we've encouraged the charges block to, for example, make sure that our septic systems are well-controlled and fit for any emergencies. We've purchased generators to make sure that our septic pumps remain active in the case of power failure. We have retention points that we have really keeping a close eye on, and taking a look at what is happening with those retention points, to make sure that they don't cause problems that double broke. So, I guess my point is that, first of all, I, I heartily support this ethic by the town. I come from a small town in Massachusetts, where they had the same issues and the same problems, and conservation is extremely important. But I want to make sure, and I'm, I'm appreciative of the fact that you've, that you're considering the commercial problems, the industrial problems that need to be addressed by, 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 by Brentwood. So, and I know the towns were very hard, and a lot of the developers, to make sure that everything is extremely well taken care of. I was involved in Wilson Way right from the very beginning, I was the first person to purchase property there. And I can tell you for a fact that between the state and the local officials, development of these communities are, are not a negative asset, if they're done right, and if the conservation people maintain great oversight in the development of these plants. We can, we contribute to the community, and I don't want anybody to get a negative connotation about these single-family homes. For myself, it's been an absolute blessing to be able to live in a community like this, and in the type of building that I'm living in, and the type of community that I'm living in, both the micro-community that I'm in, and the macro-community that I've become part of. So, there are a lot of aspects of this, but I think the town of Brentwood is going about the right way, and I applaud you, and I fully support this heart of mine.
Hi, I'm Kate Clark from 1222 Row, and sir, I agree with you, I'm, I don't really add to the town either, because I'm a childless home, but, you'd say that's facts. But I want to say for the wildlife that lives in Brentwood, that they thank you very, very much. They're getting this on valid, and now I can stop blinding about it. So please vote for it, it's a good thing, and I'm happy to.
Move the vote.
Yes, I'm in favor of moving the vote. I just want to say quickly that April 2nd, we're going to have a trash pickup day in conjunction with the rec department, so should look for announcements on that, if you'd love to see there, maybe we'll have a barbecue as well at last time.
Okay, folks, all those in favor of closing debate on warrant article number one signify aye. All those opposed? All right, debate is closed. You just did, you just did. We're now, I'm going to ask Daphne if you... We're now, I'm going to ask Daphne if you might speak to how we're going to vote.
We have two ballot boxes on either side, so you don't have to rush either one. But what will happen is you need to have your voter card with you. It will get punched, and you will be given a ballot. It's a very simple yes or no. No one needs to scribble, write anything, just check yes or no. And stick it in the box, and we will, it will still stay open for an hour, and then we will tally the votes.